Some good aspects in terms of the work that we've done updating this bylaw. There's two highway intersections, our new highway intersections that are included. In terms of a little bit of history, Cochrane previously did off-site levy bylaw updates in 2017, and subsequently in 2021. I would highlight one benefit and really credit to Mr. Derikott on this is, in the previous, and of course, I've been part of both of these previous off-site levy updates. The one in 2017 was very focused as a financial update, led by our financial services team. 2021 was led by my area. However, I would say this time it is much more of an organizational effort, and that is the focus that Mr. Derikott has requested. So our team was comprised of representatives of many different areas within our organization, and certainly supported by Mr. Nelson and others at Urban Systems. I think it's important to recognize that in 2018, the legislation changed, and that's when community amenities, including recreation, fire halls, and different aspects could be updated in the bylaw. In 2021, in the update, we did include the police station. And then subsequently, in the update coming before you, we've included, taken the first steps with fire halls, library, and the twin arena under the recreation banner. And it's an evolving process linked to strategic planning, master planning, the budget, and vision Cochrane. These are all pieces of a bigger puzzle that you've been working on, and we've been working on, and we'll be highlighting this throughout the presentation. So in terms of requirements to include in off-site levy bylaw, there's specific legislation, it's Section 648 of the Municipal Government Act. There has to be a correlation between the levy and the benefits to the new development, clear calculations and technical information, as well as it must be kept current in terms of the calculations and be publicly available. It also must be determined in consultation with the stakeholders. Traditionally, the stakeholders have been the development industry. We've done that through our other updates. But one of the things that I wanted to point out through this presentation is, within Section 648, it does outline the, and this is in the Municipal Government Act, the purpose is that growth pays for growth. I know there's lots of comments in the community about, and council has used that. Growth pays for growth is driven directly through legislation and through the province of Alberta. It also outlines what are eligible infrastructure projects, and it's very specific. It talks about the process requirements, including benefiting areas, what the calculations and assumptions must be. It must be defensible, transparent, and be based on solid engineering and financial data. And there must be meaningful consultation. And of course, there is the Alberta Land and Property Rights Tribunal oversight as part of that. Council McFadden, as part of the question last week, or on July 14th, you also asked about the recent Kenmore decision. So appreciate your knowledge of that. And that was challenged based on the process. Certainly, I believe that we've worked very collaboratively with the development industry, and understanding that we wanted to avoid any risk of appeal for this, because it can be costly and add a significant workload to administration. One other thing that I wanted to highlight is the links to risk management. Obviously, the off-site levy bylaw, and I've commented, is a legislative tool that allocates growth-related infrastructure costs to developers. But more importantly as well, it's also a core risk management instrument that protects taxpayers, matches costs to beneficiaries, and reduces financial, timing, and legal risks tied with growth. So it's critical to get this right and continually refine the process, and that's something that we're dedicated to. I briefly mentioned, you know, in terms of updating the bylaw, our process with the new legislation in 2018, so I will not dwell on that. But I think some of the factors that led to us needing to update this is not only the timeframe, but also the rapid community growth that we've experienced in 2021, significant inflation and project increases. I know there were comments last week at Committee of the Whole of sticker shock. I think there is a lot of sticker shock in terms of the costs of the projects that are outlined within the background report. For example, the James Walker Trail intersection that is considered the connection to the highway, that has a 40% increase since the last time we've prepared this bylaw. So that is something that the developers ultimately, you know, wishing to see occur in this area. This bylaw helps support that work. But it just provides a little bit of context of the scale of what we face, it's 2021. So in terms of the path to the update, industry consultation, one of the most important things, there are partners in this. We have shared updates, obtained information from the broader development community, so a series of meetings throughout this year. We also have our developer working groups. So we have the larger group of the Cochrane Developer Liaison Group, and then a smaller working groups. So we've had 10-plus meetings throughout that timeframe, and then worked with the draft background report that we shared in the end of June. And subsequently, those are some of the amendments that came forward as we continue to work with them post-first reading. We'd like to thank industry for their involvement and input. They've been a very good partner in this. Cochrane maintains a strong working relationship with the development industry, and have numerous difficult discussions throughout this process. I believe they're satisfied, you'll hear from them later this evening, but they're looking for continued collaboration and process refinement moving forward. Okay, why now? I think I touched on some of the different elements. Major projects have been delivered and advanced since the last bylaw. But there's also been significant economic shifts causing increases across all project categories. So some of the advancements of the projects that you've seen since 2021 is Highway 1A, Centre Ave, Highway 22, the River View Siphon, the River Heights Reservoir Phase 1A and Phase 1B, and we're currently working on James Walker Trail. So this is a tool that is actively working in the community. There's also, as I said, significant increases in the cost of projects. And I guess one of the questions that council's going to have through this, and we're happy to talk about this, is why did that not occur sooner? So there's completions of significant studies. This goes back to my comments about the link and the pieces of the puzzle. There's a number of pieces of the puzzle that go into this. And I just want to highlight some of the different work that we've done, including the water strategy, the water and wastewater master plan update, the water connection fee, wastewater pipeline optimization study, the fire services master plan. We currently have a number of other projects that are currently underway as well that help support and inform the off-site levy bylaw. And that's the water treatment and capacity upgrade study, which is ongoing, the water treatment plant location feasibility assessment, the parks culture and active living master plan, and the library facilities needs assessment that you heard about last week. So there's a tremendous amount of work going on. I think it's important to recognize that. Also wanted to share, and again, one of the reasons there were delays in this, there was some staff turnover. And there was some information that we needed related to the 2024 financial audit. So we need the baseline fund balances. And of course, our financial team was focused on working through that audit and the importance of that. But also the challenge associated with some staff turnover and the people no longer being with the organization. But I think what I'm really trying to drive home here is how this all ties together. We have an incremental approach. There's a number of studies that I listed in my previous summary, but I also like to list Envision Cochrane 2050, our strategic plan, and the strategic services update that came last week, how important those people are to this effort as well. Some other efforts that are going to come forward as well is our budget for 2026, the master planning process, the 10-year capital plan, improving infrastructure delivery. We've talked about the feasibility assessment for the twin arena that will be coming forward, and the needs assessment for the library. Just for clarity, and certainly something that Ms. Ambrose will be talking about later regarding the feasibility assessment, and I don't want to focus on that too much. But really, for clarity, this is intended to give council a complete tactical, financial, and operational assessment before any decisions are made. So there's lots of pieces to this puzzle. It all ties together, and just wanted to emphasize that. Now, I'll just try and, in terms of our current off-site levy program, we're very proud of the work that we've done with this important financial tool to date. But the current bylaw includes cost recovery for sanitary, collection, sanitary disposal, water treatment and supply, water distribution, transportation, highway intersections, and our protective services facility. So you can see the all-new growth is subject to the off-site levy and the range of costs. And there is some of the recent items that we've delivered on that we're very proud of. And now I will turn it over to Chris, as he has been working with our project team on the proposed updates, and he's got some more details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heineman. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just going to provide a little bit of a snapshot of the proposed updates that are before council today, and that are contained within the background report. So when our team started out, and when I said project team, the town and our team at Urban, with this update, there was really three key factors that we were focused on. Number one is we wanted to update existing projects that were within the off-site levy bylaw and make sure that we're truing those up as much as possible with new project costs and information. And if there's been any scope changes based on some of the further studies and analysis that Mr. Heineman mentioned earlier that's gone on over the last four years. Number two is that we wanted to include new projects that support growth. And so you'll see those today in front of you, fire, library, and recreation. And the third piece was making sure that we update all the financial inputs that go into the modeling and the base assumptions in off-site levy work. And that's including interest rates, inflation, fund balances, and payment timing. All those are critical to getting to your final rates. Currently, within the off-site levy bylaw for Cochrane, you have water, sanitary sewer, roads, highway intersections, land associated with all those pieces, and then police stations. So those are the current infrastructure and facilities that are within your current bylaw. Under the proposed updates, there'd be an inclusion now of community recreation, fire halls, and libraries in addition to those existing infrastructure and facilities. The only piece that's permitted under the MGA that wouldn't be included in your off-site levy is stormwater, which is handled right now by developers on a local basis. They build their facilities to accommodate their neighborhoods. The next few slides, just going to highlight the changes or the adjustments in the proposed updates. So for sanitary, there's two pieces of sanitary within your proposed bylaw. There's sanitary collection and sanitary disposal. The collection, there's a new project that's been identified through the water wastewater master plan work that the town undertook. And this is a new trunk line that connects to your transfer station, then takes sewage onto Calgary. The sanitary, and then I should also highlight with collection, a number of the projects the town built historically, this is going back decades, have now been fully recovered for and are taken out of the bylaw. They've been fully cost recovered. Sanitary disposals, this is your pipeline from Cochrane to Calgary. There's been some further work in the last number of years around the pipeline, optimization work and how to deliver that infrastructure. And so that's guided the update that you're seeing in front of you in the off-site levy in regards to the infrastructure sizing and cost updates. For water, you have a water supply and treatment levy within the current bylaw. There's some significant changes here to the expansion of the water treatment plant to accommodate future growth. And so that's been picked up within this levy update. So the scope's been adjusted and expanded to allow for that future growth to be accommodated. And what we've seen in this type of infrastructure and a lot of the vertical infrastructure is significant price escalations with the type of infrastructure that needs to be delivered in the future to accommodate growth. Two other water pieces within the current, or the proposed bylaw, sorry. You have water distribution, so existing projects that are within the bylaw, those were updated from a project cost perspective, and any scope changes that were being looked at and considered through the water wastewater master plan. And so that was been trued up within this proposed update. And one new project from a distribution perspective is the River Heights Second Supply Line. As South Cochrane is growing quite quickly, that supply line was identified. It's needed a few years out still, but identified, and now you can start collecting for that. So that, there's money in the bank to advance that when it's needed. Water storage, obviously, Mr. Heineman mentioned, River Heights Reservoir. Phase 1A of that has been delivered. Phase 1B is underway right now, as you'd see in the community. And so we were able to update the actual tender prices within the bylaw and make sure that you're going to be fully cost recovered when that project is complete. Transportation, so a number of the projects, I was making sure that we had the most current pricing. And some of those, again, have gone to tender, like James Walker Trails Stage 3. So we had actual pricing from the market to be able to include in the bylaw. Other ones, it was updating project costs based on what we're seeing in the market now. And then for highway intersections, again, updating costs. And then there's two new projects that are identified based on community growth. And that's Rolling Trails on Highway 22 intersection, along Highway 22, sorry. And then Harrods Hills at Highway 1A. So those are now proposed to be included within the off-site levy bylaw. Should note, for highway intersections, those are all front-ended by developers, or to be front-ended by developers, and then the levies are a mechanism to recover and pay them back for that front-ending over time. Community amenities, so the police station facilities are in your current bylaw. The project was delivered, so we were able to update the actual costs within the bylaw to make sure that's as current as possible. And then expand the benefit area to the town boundary based on the service from that facility. For fire, as Mr. Heineman mentioned, the fire services master plan was completed. I'd identified within there the need for two new satellite fire stations to accommodate the town to full build-out of your town boundary. And so those have now been included within the proposed bylaw. The last piece is two new community amenities, recreation and library. So there's recognition within this proposed bylaw that these are needs within the community to support growth from a recreation and library expansion perspective. Both these have master plans that are underway, and they're to be completed in Q1 and Q2 of next year's target timeline. So the intent here is to include these within the bylaw, the incremental step, 20% of the calculated levy. As that work is being completed, master plans, then the levy would be updated and reflective of the full needs within the community, and then the full levy be charged at that point going forward. The last updates that I'll highlight here, financial inputs. So when you're doing the modeling, you want to make sure you're updating inflation that impacts the levy rate or projects going forward. Interest rates, so how much interest you're paying on debt perhaps that the municipality is carrying, or that you're receiving if you're carrying positive fund balances. And then assumptions around grants, if that's changed in the landscape or not. And so those have all been updated now within the proposed bylaw. And then payment timing, currently, the town has a two-payment structure, and that's shifting, the proposal is to shift that to a three-payment schedule, which is more consistent with what's occurring in the region from a payment perspective. And so as you come in with your endorsement, you pay 20% at endorsement of the full levy amount that you owe. And then after one year, you pay 40%, and then in two years, 40%. And that aligns some of those costs with revenues of development. So the results of that is summarized here in this table. And there's a lot of nuance here, so again, this is just the top of the waves, showing an average of what the levy rates are. So the current levy right now, you know, round to the nearest thousand, is $320,000 on average. Again, that fluctuates depending on what development zone, there's 17 in Cochrane, so depending on which one you're in. The proposed rate is $423,000, so a variation of 32% or $103,000 per hectare, as referenced by Mr. Heineman. You also see there the min and the max. There's some differences here, obviously, because of the development zones, depending on how you're being serviced within that development zone and what infrastructure's coming on. That's obviously impacts the min and the max, as you're seeing there. A little bit further breakdown of this, this shows the different zones and what levies associated with that different zone. And then the current is on the far left column, and then in the middle is the proposed rates. And then the far right shows the change within each of those zones. What we wanted to highlight here is, you know, not insignificant changes for sure, and recognize that, that 32% on average is not a marginal difference, it's a significant change. But a big component of that change is the introduction of some additional infrastructure in the levy program. And so there's new hard infrastructure being included. So that's wastewater pipeline, as I mentioned, the trunk, second supply line, and then two new highway intersections. That makes up, depending on where you are developing, you might pay those levies or you might not, again, if you benefit from it or not. So there's a range there of $28,000 to $83,000 is from new hard infrastructure. The new community amenities, that's fire, library, and recreation, make up about $37,000 of the increase. And then obviously, there's some adjustments to the project costs and scoping for the other pieces that make up the difference. Always like to share this before we share regional comparisons, and I'm sure perhaps council's heard this from me before. Every community within the region, is what the next slide will show, delivers services differently. Some might treat their own water, some might treat their own sanitary, some might pipe it to the city of Calgary, for example. Some include certain pieces of infrastructure where others require developers to front-end that and deliver it. And then just the nature of each community is different. You know, Cochrane's got significant topography, so that influences the type of infrastructure that needs to show up in your community, perhaps relative to others. And so it's really hard to compare one community to the other. But we always get asked this question, so we bring this slide to share it. But again, I would put it, I suggest it's a little bit of a grain of salt. You have to digest this, because it's not apples to apples for every community. You have to really break it down for each community as to what they're delivering within their levy program relative to another community. See Cochrane there in the brighter green, the proposed levies, on average, again, would be $430,000. That would put you somewhat in the middle amongst the more urban communities within the region. The city of Calgary is just over $600,000. Airdrie's post-annexation, they have two levies. Now, it's just Cochrane's likely more close to the pre-annexation, just given the nature of that community build-out. And so Cochrane would be more in the middle line there. There is some significant differences though between what the city of Calgary includes. Wastewater treatment would be a big one. Their wastewater treatment levy is, I believe, $180,000 on its own. So there's some pretty significant differences there of how they're delivering infrastructure, or it's $150,000, I should say, not $180,000. And then Airdrie, a pretty significant wastewater levy as well, depending on what development zone you're in within that community. And that's why you can see that such a big range of how they charge their levies. I'm in here to talk about the next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I think, just trying to wrap up here, get to council's questions. But what I really wanted to emphasize here is that significant process or progress has been made on this project, and the work to date has laid a strong foundation to build on. However, work's not done. This is just the beginning, and there's more work to do. And the additional work is following the master plan processes that are currently underway and due to be completed, is work with industry in terms of introducing, fully introducing the community amenities. I think there's a desire for increased public transparency moving forward as well, and continued collaboration with the development industry. Achieving our intended outcomes will require continued focus, dedicated time, and strategic alignment with other council key objectives. I would like to emphasize, though, this is a living document. It is subject to change. So as the next council moves forward, there may be different priorities. And certainly, we're committed to working with council and continuing to have this document evolve. But by maintaining the momentum and committing to the next phases of the work, we can ensure that this project continues to deliver the long-term benefits envisioned for Cochrane and its residents. And I think one of the pillars that, or the pillars that we really want to look at moving forward with would be pillars of fairness, transparency, and community benefit. Those are three important things to reflect on. And really, getting back to the slide, continuous and incremental approach, where we're continuing to work on this, regular review and update of the off-site levy bylaw. I know on the 14th of July, there was some question about can we improve or change the required review time? That's something that we can look at. Risk management focus, I think that's going to be important for us. Continue to build on the internal capacity for this process. I can't stress that enough, that it's great to have strategic advisors like Urban Systems. However, something that is very important to us is continuing to build on our internal team and their knowledge base. We had three people working on this from finance, our community growth, and our engineering teams, and we want to build on that moving forward to get better results for council and for the community. And I think the last place that I'd like to really focus on is raising the bar in terms of transparency and accessibility to growth-related infrastructure. So I know there's been comments previously about the annual reporting requirements or improvements. That is something we're committed to doing, and it will be part of the year-end process. Mr. Alim and his team and our teams will work together to do this. The connections to the 10-year capital plan, and then long-range infrastructure planning and master plans, we've referenced several of them today, that will be critical. So this concludes the presentation. I see there's some lights on, and we're happy to answer questions. But we'll turn this over to council to hear from impacted stakeholders and members of the public. But before I do that, I would just give what administration's recommendation at this point would be, is that council considers and receives all comments presented at the non-statutory public hearing for bylaw 15, 2025. Thank you for your patience. I know that was a long presentation, but we felt it was important to do that background work to guide the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Heineman and Mr. Nelson. There is a lot of complexity to this bylaw and a lot of information, so appreciate your presentation. Go to you first, Counsel Wilson, you're up for questions.
Thank you. Unusually, up first to the microphone, just because I really, this subject fires me up, so I appreciate it, gentlemen. Kick any of my questions to after the public hearing if we think they're more usefully addressed there. I didn't, I don't want to hold up the public hearing. But the three things that come to mind here, number one, when I'm looking at your project list, I don't see Centre Avenue between Main Street, which is First Street, and Railway. Highway expansion to go to Four Lanes, I don't see that in the projects.
From centre to railway?
Our Centre Ave intersection, which stretches from Railway Street to First Street, is that in the?
It is in the off-site levy, I can certainly confirm, but it is in there.
Oh, excellent, okay. That's a great answer. I'll just stop there. If it's in there, I'm happy.
Yes.
Okay.
Just, I can tell you exactly what the page is on. It's the first project on page 27. There's $63 million of infrastructure projects that are concluded, and I know that your desire and priority for that one, and certainly that is on the list.
Okay, on to number two. It gets really concerning, and I know this isn't lost on the two of you, when you talk about all the things that can't currently be charged for in the MGA, and just a few things that I just jotted here as we're walking through that, outdoor recreation, paths, parks, transit, all the internal programs that need to grow with growth, like the only one I put down here is economic development, but I can name a dozen for sure. Community programs, like our entire FCSS portfolio. So when we talk about those things, just a quick touch point on, as our town grows, all those things I just listed are affected and become more expensive, but we can't charge off-site levies for them? Maybe just a quick comment on how do we avoid a looming bankruptcy in the future when we can't charge for those things? It scares the heck out of me that all those topics remain unaddressed, and I know that's outside of your control, but.
It is, and I think Counsel Wilson, or through the chair to Counsel Wilson, it's something that, there's an evolving nature of development in Alberta. We'll continue to advocate through Alberta municipalities. We're part of the mid-sized cities. There's lots of different opportunities for us. Cochrane has been very influential at those, in those environments, and certainly with the province. So we'll continue to explore that, but currently, you're correct, we cannot collect for those. But as we continue to grow, that's something that could certainly be a priority of council as we move forward.
Okay, great. Thanks for at least touching on it. And the third thing that came to mind here, my third question was, when we were comparing ourselves to the other municipalities, could we go back to that slide, the comparison slides, if it's handy?
Just one moment.
And all I was going to ask, as you scroll back to it, is with this new OSL update, we've increased our, what we're charging for by 32%, which is substantial, I think is the number you said. What percentage of what we could be charging for have we now achieved? Could you isolate that by chance? Like, obviously, I don't know if we'd ever get to 100%, but what end of the spectrum are we currently at? Where, I understand we can't compare ourselves to Airdrie or Calgary because we don't have our own waste treatment plant to charge for. So that's a huge reason why our bar is much lower than theirs. For what we could charge for, where do we sit? Can you ballpark that even?
Well, Counsel Wilson, I'll try, and certainly, you know, Mr. Nelson may have some comments as well. I think one of the important things is, I would say that this is, represents a moment in time. If council receives all the input this evening and then certainly supports the bylaw, we get this approved, there's a 32% increase. Then when we're working and the master plans come forward and we continue to refine it, we're going to work with industry, work with impacted groups, but this will change. I think that's the most important thing, because we haven't done the background studies for the library needs assessment, as well as the community rec. So Mr. Nelson was talking about the 20%. Well, when we start to have the full impact of that, this will change and likely will increase. But there are many steps in that process where we continue to have to work with industry. Because there are some other impacts as well that I'm sure you'll hear about tonight, which is including impact on affordability and things like that. So hopefully that provides a little bit of context, but certainly if anybody else has.
Thank you, Chair, I think I would just add to Mr. Heineman's comments. That any applicable projects that fall within the purview of the legislation and have the associated info information, including studies, technical and otherwise. I would say are included in this bylaw, and even the beginning processes of including those that are in their early stages, such as the library and those rec pieces. So I don't know that we could put a percentage on it, other than to say we've considered all applicable projects.
I'll turn my microphone off after this one, I do have a few more things here, but I can save it till we get into our our actual OSL debate, get to the public hearing. Just on on the infrastructure lifecycle topic, where if we just take the Glenn Patrick example, it's currently going on, that Mr. Heineman, you could tell me the exact price tag for, but.
Fifteen million?
Thank you, I was gonna guess about there, fifteen million dollars for deep servicing life cycling, how how much of that are we currently, can we be collecting for in offsite levies? Is there any percentage of that, or is that strictly?
No, that's infrastructure, that's infrastructure, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought there might be something in the deep servicing there that could be, that was included in this.
Well, there are, there are, again, through utilities, there are opportunities, but again, that is something that we'll happy to look into further.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next up, Counselor Nagel.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you could provide some clarity on the table that is found on page twelve of the bylaw document. Not the presentation, the document, it's a it's a big table with a bunch of red, there's eighteen different rows, including titles.
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Nagel, that's what I started in terms of doing a little bit of housekeeping. So you were provided with a first reading copy, at first reading, and then when we did the updates and had the changes, the redlined copy is the updates to that. So the thirty eight percent represents the total cost that was presented to you on July fourteenth. And then the amended cost, which is thirty two percent, the revision that is based on the contingencies and the provincial contribution to the fire hall. Or police hall, excuse me, is, represents that change. So it's redlined, so it's very clear, I appreciate there's a lot of information in there, but that is the intent of that, so I I appreciate your question.
So on the transportation piece, originally, we were looking at collecting sixty four point nine thousand per hectare. And then since first reading, that's been reduced to fifty eight point nine, about fifty nine thousand?
Yes, with the project contingencies changing as well as that contribution to the police station. So again, that is the reason for that reduction.
How did we get to the decision to reduce that?
Well, as we worked through with industry, there were some concerns about the amount of, and I think you'll hear it from that, from them later this evening. Their concerns with our policy in terms of the contingencies, and there were fifty percent contingencies in some of the major capital projects. And the example of James Walker Trail, that's what we're currently proceeding. So from their point of view, having fifty percent contingencies on a project that is underway and we have more certainty in terms of the cost is unfair. So certainly, we adjusted those, keeping it still within the policy, though.
Have other regions used a fifty percent contingency, or why did we decide on that for the first draft?
That maybe Chris if.
Yeah, through the Chair to Counselor Nagel, it depends, different communities use different contingencies for sure. The range right now in Cochrane's policy is for conceptual projects, the range should be between thirty five and fifty percent. And so those projects were still conceptual in nature. But as as Mr. Heineman mentioned, as we went through that between first reading and now, some of those projects are a little bit more certainty from a conceptual perspective than others because of associated works that are happening. Stage three of James Walker Trail is occurring, this James Walker Trail on South Bull Lands is is underway as well. And so this portion of James Walker is the additional two lanes to go to four lanes in the future, you know, ten years down the road, wherever the timeframe is, I don't remember off the top of my head. And then the other project was similar from a transportation perspective, and that's why by adjusting those contingencies, the levy rate does come down.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, and then I have another question about the move from a two year repayment period to a three year repayment period. What is the total cost, the opportunity cost and impact that that'll have on our debt limit and our ten year capital plan and the cash flow for it?
Through the Chair to Counselor Nagel, don't have the exact number, but once you get past, you know, year one, you're in the cycle. And so every year, you're actually receiving a hundred percent because you're getting forty percent from the previous year, twenty percent from the year previous to that, for example. So the cash flow impacts would be fairly marginal, because right now you have forty percent at execution of your endorsement, and then sixty percent after one year anniversary. And so you're you're stringing that out one year, and very, I'd suggest very marginal cash flow implications along, over the long term of twenty five year forecasting.
And so what is, since we don't have an exact number, I'm trying to figure out how to approximate the value of it. So what is the current repayment schedule for this offsite levy bylaw? No, not not in terms of the time.
The duration of the whole bylaw?
The question is, how much money would we collect in a typical year at a two year schedule versus a three year schedule?
Yeah, so we could make some assumptions around rate of growth, it's it's varied quite a bit in Cochrane, as as council would be aware. But if we assumed thirty hectares of growth per year, and then the average cost is four hundred and twenty thousand per hectare. We could work on the assumptions off of that as to what percent the difference is for cash flow delaying a year.
Is that about twelve million?
Plus or minus, and yeah, rough math, yeah.
Per year, and so by delaying this out from two years to three years, would would we, would we be carrying an additional twelve million dollars of debt per year in order to do this? Or to be more like eight million?
Yeah, it's it's very, that's not a straightforward answer, because it depends on how you advance the infrastructure. Some of your offsite levy balances are are positive, and so you're not taking any debt, you're advancing that with cash, whereas other ones you're taking to ventures out. And you're just worried about making sure you can cover your principal interest payments. And so, you know, obviously, from a cash flow perspective there, that's where you'd be concerned about. But it would suggest, based on the amount of growth that you're seeing, that you wouldn't have to worry about that from transportation perspective otherwise.
And the reason I'm seeking clarification for that is, I believe we're projected to hit our debt limit. And so anything we could do that would be put even more strain on our debt is something we need to make sure we're really understanding before we make that decision. But I'll save that for outside the public hearing, and I guess I'm done.
Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up on that question line. So, I mean, just back on the the payment schedule and to change that. I can understand the benefit to the development community, is it, it kind of supports the cash flow and for them to continue to advance development, that's an accurate statement?
Yes, it's consistent around the region and certainly something they were very supportive of.
And so Counselor Nagel's point of view that the municipality is actually kind of incurring a lost revenue in the years. And I I share his concerns, especially when we're starting to look at some of these projects that our community really wants us to deliver on. Whether it be the Horse Creek project or the library project or any of the recreation projects, cultural projects that we're talking about. So that's a bit of a flag for me, for sure. And so beyond that, what are the other liabilities to the municipality in in expanding it from two to three? Or even have it at all, because I've done a little bit of research on this, and I understand. If we were to do an environmental scan, I understand Okatook's actually going the other way on this, and is not supporting delayed payment plan. And I don't, I would like to check with that, with you guys, and get a little bit of an environmental scan on that as well.
I'll probably provide Chris an opportunity, I know through Urban Systems, they're working with Okatook, so I don't have all the background.
Through the Chair, Counselor McFadden, that process is still underway, and so there's not been any final decisions by administration. But to my knowledge, and I guess everything that's been been shared in the public around that project, not aware of any kind of shift on that payment timing and going away from what the current approach is. And or maybe looking at an alternative, so not not that I'm aware of. But within the region, Airdrie, City Calgary, Chestermere. Bill might be able to confirm that, but all three of them do a three payment approach, so it's fairly consistent within the region. There, the implication, I think, the risks that you're highlighting, the cash flow, it's, is, once you get the system in place, like I was mentioning, and you get the the twenty percent payment in, the next to the forty, the forty. Then you're in a full cycle, so every year you're receiving a hundred percent of levy payments, again, assuming levies don't change, you know, all those things. But so the the risk is, again, a one year delta there of what you're receiving from execution of endorsement relative to what the shift would be.
Okay, yeah, so that's kind of the other piece, I mean, we did receive, I guess, Bill's is gonna make a presentation too. Still be able to to ask at that point, but I think, Mr. Heineman, you identified, like, it's critical that we get this right. And I know we really wanted to, as a council, get it right in the term. But that'll be one of my thoughts and analysis as we go through the public hearing and second and third reading tonight is, is have we got it right? Or should we defer this to the next council? So I just wanted to share that as we move into the rest of the public hearing.
Counselor Reed?
I'm not sure if this comments are appropriately placed here or later on the on the agenda.
Is it a question?
Given that everybody else is taking a stab at it. Yeah, the, I appreciate my colleagues' questions, for me, it's less of an issue about three payments versus two. That it is about the actual, so just to put it in a public context, this document is three hundred and fifty five pages long. Having opportunity to read it, my focus has really been on the finance end. And in particular, I was curious on page thirty seven about the financial model inputs that 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 you came up with, and in particular, what percentages you allocated to those areas. Are those, are those standard in terms of that? Because I would think, depending on how frequently this bylaw is updated, those numbers could be, those percentages could be off substantially.
Through the Chair to Counselor Reed, for sure, the these financial inputs are something that's always changing, and you gotta be aware of that. And on top of that, obviously, the more frequently that you update your bylaw, the more frequently that you can align those things with the current state of the economy. And since the last levy update, there's been significant changes in interest rates, and some of that's because of how the province handled debt, now they've shifted back again to supporting municipalities in that space. It's been obviously economic factors, similarly around inflation. So what what the number of communities do and what's proposed in this is using more of an average approach. So instead of taking the point in time today, what is the rates today, because this is a twenty five year outlook. And so you're forecasting pretty far out for a number of pieces of infrastructure, it's taking a five year average and then applying that to those assumptions for for interest rates in particular. And so that's, you know, I think the key piece there is the more often that you touch this and update it, that de-risks it for both industry and for municipality around those changes. Anytime debt is taken out, though, just to highlight this, anytime debt is actually taken out, that's captured in the modeling of the actual payments that you're making. So the rate that you borrowed at for James Walker, whatever it might be, is captured in there within this this bylaw update.
And I would, I would say there's much more to this report, the three hundred and fifty five pages than the summary and the background information. And not that you're taking anything away, but I appreciate the highlights, but there's certainly a lot more meat in here. If I could just beg council's indulgence in terms of one other question. The question about on page thirty five in terms of redevelopment, we've not talked about that at all. And can you just add a little color to that, that picture in terms of what what the offsite levy would do for redevelopment?
Through the, through the Chair, I mean redevelopment, similar to any growth, if redevelopment's to occur in the community and it requires servicing. So uses up capacity of water, sewer, whatever it might be, then they would be contributing towards towards the levy. And there's a calculation within there because the intensity of a site right now might be something, and then they're increasing the intensity, so it accounts for that current intensity and the adjustment to that. So there's a bit of a calculation in the background report that helps administration apply that to redevelopment. What what the levy does, though, overall, for growth in general, redevelopment included, is it helps provide certainty around infrastructure, infrastructure delivery, and then how you can contribute to that as you develop out. And so that would be beneficial to both redevelopment and to to new growth. There is within your your core, you know, capacity in different areas and limited capacity in other areas, so that's more of a site by site basis as they redevelop.
Great, thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other questions, I think we can move to the public portion of the public hearing. I'm gonna go to the speakers list, the first speaker on the list is Judy Stewart.
Good evening, I'm gonna read, I don't want to miss anything. We've waited more than four years now, or not quite four years, since the last offsite levy bylaw was presented to you and then enacted by this very council. That's certainly not in keeping with the MGA to have waited this long. This bylaw before you right now, if you look at all the details and supporting documents that you have in your possession. Needs a lot more work. From the questions you've been asking, I can hear that, and I'm deaf as a doornail. It needs a lot more work, are you sure that this is what you want going forward? Maybe this should be left to the new council. Because you want to make sure that that new council coming in has an opportunity to work into the offsite levy their strategic priorities. And they may have some that isn't reflected in this document. For example, perhaps they might enjoy a performing arts center, which would qualify. Perhaps they would enjoy some other kind of infrastructure, like trying to use storm drainage from the storm drainage ponds. You can now do that under the amended water legislation. Since it is so late in being presented to you, just almost right before the election, what is the rush? Why are you being forced at this late hour to pass this offsite levy bylaw? The proposed bylaw does not have an integrated infrastructure and facilities master plan attached to it. Doesn't recognize the critical connections between water, wastewater, what goes in must go out, storm drainage. And all those other facilities, including our transportation corridors and our very, very much needed cultural and recreational facilities. Not just recreation, cultural. I'd even go so far as to say we need a lot more social infrastructure and facilities. There's no mention of low impact development technology. There's no mention of trying to keep our storm drainage and our stormwater on the lands where it falls. Especially in times of drought and severe weather events, we need to start looking at that kind of information as well. Where is the well studied, comprehensive and clearly integrated infrastructure master plan? We need that before we continue to move forward piecemeal, development by development. Place by place, parcel by parcel, we need to have a plan. Perhaps the new council will see the absolute necessity of integrating, of integrating infrastructure and our needed facilities. The numbers, costs, completion dates, levies calculated to support the various plans, our MDP, the ASPs, our ARPs. The ten year capital plan, the most recent growth plan, and the most recent budget. This offsite levy does not compute. You just have to look at it. Timelines are very important, as you know, because the costs escalate over time. What you're proving now, the costs for that actual infrastructure may be exceedingly different down the road. There has been no public consultation. I'm a member of the public, it's the first time I heard about this. That's why I came to this public hearing. All right. Wouldn't it have been a very important thing to do to have more public consultation on this? Given the strong language in the MGA, they said public consultation was critical for all community development. It's right in there, you have very interested, knowledgeable, competent people out there who want to be consulted. And who will be consulted if you invite them, like, to this public hearing. They want to come forward, they want to know what they're supposed to pay for, what developers are supposed to pay for, when it's going to get paid, and who is gonna pay it. They want to know that, you have a very smart public. get paid, and who is going to pay it. They want to know that. You have a very smart public. The data and calculations used to create this bylaw have not been disclosed to the public, and this is mandated in the MGA. Finally, let's ensure that there's an annual reporting on implementation of this bylaw with adaptation and revisions over time and as required. Annual reporting is a, in a public meeting is required under the MGA. Did you know that? It's required. It's not optional. Is this it? Is this all we get? Why should there be this rush to get something this important, this important, amassed so quickly by consultants who actually don't have all the data or information even in front of them before them, right now, right before your term ends? Why? It makes no sense to me. Most of you know that with my disappointment in how growth has been managed and the constant rhetoric about growth paying for itself, I know, I've lived here for forty-five years, forty-seven, Lisa told me, she can do math better than me, forty-seven years, growth has never paid for itself. And given this offsite levy, it's not going to pay for itself in the future either. I want to be very clear, in case you didn't get it, I'm very opposed to this offsite levy as presented. It needs a lot more work. It needs the new council, consultants, and your competent staff to work with you and the public. I want to make sure that there are reports and projections for water, wastewater, storm drainage, infrastructure, and all those wonderful facilities that we need and services that we need and infrastructure that we need. Yeah, you know, I might still be till I'm a hundred and one. Be afraid. Okay, my summation comes from the Build letter. I didn't make this up. The Build letter ends this way. More frequent offsite levy bylaw updates with true up adjustments to actual costs would reduce risks and ensure fair, accurate, and transparent levies. Boy, oh, boy. It's the first time in my life I've been dead on an agreement with the development industry in this community. Thank you for your attention, and I appreciate it. And I apologize to poor Mr. Cox, who said he'd give me a ride home.
Okay, thank you. Next on the list is Sabine Spears. Administration, could we get the time clock up on the screen? Is it? I can't see it. Oh, it's at the top. Okay. Thank you.
So I'm going to have a lot of overlap with Judy, just for the record there. I do find it's interesting time for this topic. It's the last council meeting. Lots of discussions going on about how to slow or manage growth, and it's all out there. And then we have this bylaw in front of us. I agree it needs to be updated. I question the timing and the quality of the report. It was funded in 2023 for a hundred thousand dollars, then another fifty thousand thrown at it in 2024, shows up July 2025 with the addition of the twin arena. My preference is to wait for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan so we can see all the needs and then decide on a recommendation forward on that one. I'll be describing some slides because I didn't submit in time. So levies fuel critical infrastructure. Offsite levies are essential in financing our critical infrastructure projects over the next twenty years. This bylaw is proposing a lot of key changes which impact both the rates and the coverage. And it's important to recognize that it's vital we all understand what these changes imply, and we need to be able to trust the numbers. And that's why we need clear communication and a strategic foresight to ensure community trust and responsible growth. Understanding inflation and planning. The average levy rates are set to increase about thirty-eight, thirty-two percent, they're saying now, in this bylaw. Without detailed cost data, that sharp increase could indicate reactive budgeting rather than proactive infrastructure planning. I would like to highlight the importance of transparent and detailed cost information, which will aid in fostering better planning decisions. I can't show you this one, but I had a breakdown of the average versus actuals, because we keep talking about this thirty-eight, thirty-two. But when you actually break that down, you are looking at like water supply increases at two hundred and sixty-two percent, water distribution, a hundred and forty-two, forty-six percent, Sunset North, three hundred and thirty-three percent. So these, and there's some negatives, which brings your average down to your thirty-two. All I was going to say here is this just highlights what the rate increases are when statistical averages are removed. It paints a different picture and raises more questions. The bylaw also notes the absorption of the community enhancement fee into the parks development fee, which increases levy burdens. This amenity creep could lead to funding amenities beyond what is legally sanctioned, raising financial and legal concerns that must be managed carefully. So I haven't heard anyone speak to that. Uniform rates don't reflect diverse needs. Should we be applying a uniform rate? Will this account for the differing infrastructure needs and costs across varied development zones? Could this lead to overcharging some areas while underfunding others? Are we trying to do everything at the same time instead of focusing on specific zones? This is where I start mimicking Judy. Gaps in planning and transparency. The 2025 bylaw does not include growth projections. There is no correlation with the project dates. How were the completion dates determined? Without a clear connection between the capital projects and the community growth, levy funds may be misallocated. There is no comprehensive infrastructure master plan, which ties the municipal development plan to the capital plan, to the budget, and finally, to the bylaw. The infrastructure plan is a roadmap laying out what we need, when we need it, based on growth, development rules, community needs, everything. It allows the opportunity to plan based on what we can afford. Which plan are we following? So I took a comparison and I looked at bylaw, capital plan, budget. So a couple examples here is wastewater twinning phase one. So we have the 2021 bylaw actually said it was fourteen point seven million. I appreciate there's going to be cost adjustments on, on that one. And it was going to be done 2025. 2025 bylaw, we're at forty-six million, should be done 2030. And in the budget, it's fifty-five point eight million, it'll be done 2027. So which plan? I can do dozens of these. Your River Heights Reservoir Second Supply Line, Phase Two, in the ten-year capital plan 2026, bylaw completion is 2044, which is? These are just a couple of examples of how none of the documents lie. There are many more projects, same issue. When comparing those three projects, it's the project costs, timelines, and levy amounts do not match. But what do I know based on the information supplied to me? I do know the 2025 approved budget shows forty-two million offsite funding in support of capital projects for a four-year period. The ten-year capital plan shows a hundred and five million for the same period. But in your capital plan, some projects don't have costs associated, so this could be understated. The bylaw shows three hundred and sixty-three million in project costs. But again, some don't have costs associated with them or dates. So this may be understated. If you approve that wastewater twinning phase one project in the next budget cycle, that would mean the town would have incurred eighty-one million in debentures. And this is from the period of 2025 to 2027. So my question, can you tell me what the projects will cost, when they'll be completed, the amount of offsite levies to be collected, and when they will be collected? And which document is the source of truth? If you can't answer that question, then we have a problem.
Ms. Spears, are you getting close to the end of your?
Yep. I have two. MGA offsite levies, public consultation, quote, provides that a municipality must consult in good faith with stakeholders. Residents are stakeholders. The calculations were not made public. The process was not fulfilled, allowing residents to analyze the information, provide feedback. The public hearing is an avenue to achieve this. Allowing residents thirty minutes without any supporting documentation, supporting information will not achieve trust. Last slide. MGA offsite levies, annual reporting. This hasn't been published for years. It's in the bylaw, only, it's in the offsite levy bylaw, only because it's mandated in the MGA, but it's not followed. Residents have no access to what has been collected and when we will recover the costs. So I call this a lot of chaos. And I'll end it there.
Well, you have one question, Ms. Spears. Counsel McFadden?
Ms. Spears, thank you very much for your thoughtful presentation and for running the numbers. That's always appreciated. And I'm not sure if we're allowed to receive your slides still or not as part of the process. But if we are, I would like to receive them. Is it possible to do that?
Thumbs up from administration.
Just tell me how I send it.
Yeah, if you could submit, I'm sure all of counsel would like to, to see them.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Kimber Higa and Brian Han. And I'm, I'm going to butcher last names. Did I get those right? I did.
Good evening, Mayor Han and members of council. As announced, my name is Kimber Higa, and I am Director of Regional Initiatives at Bilt Calgary Region. And joining me today is our CEO, Brian Han. So we're grateful for the opportunity to speak today in support of the proposed offsite levy bylaw update. Thank you for the distribution of Bilt's letter of support. And I will use my time tonight to summarize the key messages from our letter. So we've been working pretty diligently, especially over the last few months, with administration on offsite levies and highlight the importance of industry's involvement. Offsite levies are a key component of growth, and we believe more time for collaboration should be built into the process going forward. We've committed to administration to continue our work through collaborative approaches that focus on infrastructure design, timing, sizing, and collectively pursuing grants. Growth pays for growth, but also should focus on economies of scale and mutual benefit. The proposed levies do represent a significant average increase of thirty-two percent. Higher levies do directly impact housing affordability and the viability of, oh, sorry. Sorry, my notes just froze. Sorry. And the viability of future investments to the town. We are recommending that industry and administration work together to find opportunities to lessen affordability impacts and that levy updates occur more frequently, which would decrease the overall degree of impact and provide better certainty. We are also asking for the review of, as mentioned, the capital project cost estimate development policy, specifically as it relates to leavable projects. The current process adds thirty-five to fifty percent contingency to most projects and inflates costs and rates and creeds in equities. We believe formalizing more frequent offsite levy updates with true-up adjustments to actual costs for infrastructure will reduce the risk and provide more accurate levies. In summary, as Bilt and our members, we are in support of the proposed bylaw as presented by administration. We are committed to continuing our work with yourselves and administration on the offsite levy bylaw. And we believe that we share a goal that Cochrane's existing and future residents deserve infrastructure that supports growth without compromising affordability, competitiveness, or fairness. There has been a lot of comments about delaying the levy. I believe on behalf of industry, we are in support of the bylaw adjustments going forward. It is a significant increase, but the delay would only compound that increase in costs and lessen the certainty for development in the future. Thank you for your time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Flowers?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. My one question's around affordable housing. So if it increases the cost of housing to put these levies in place, is there any avenues for affordable housing to be exempt?
Thank you for your question, Counsel Flowers. Through the chair, I don't believe it would directly impact, typically affordable housing projects are a combination of finding private, municipal, and provincial federal investment. Any project is subject to offsite levies, so that, I'm not sure through the levy program that there's a way to directly impact affordable housing projects. Of course, it will all, it will be more expensive with the levy rates in place. But overall, I mean, if, if the infrastructure is required, that grow, and that growth pays for growth, I think that's something we need to work on separate from the offsite levies.
Perhaps that's a question you can direct to administration after.
Thank you.
Counsel Wilson?
Thank you. I have a, I guess, a similar question that I asked to administration at the start of the presentation here, and that's to your group. I just wanted to make sure I'm unclear on what Bilt is, and that's a, you represent a conglomerate of all the developers in the development industry that are building houses in Cochrane and Calgary region. Is that, is that who you're here representing?
Yep, Bilt Calgary Region, we are a not-for-profit organization. We have over six hundred member companies that, the breadth of which is the building industry and land development. So everything from developers, builders, to consultants, professional.
Trades, manufacturers, suppliers, full, full value chain.
Okay.
In the land development and building, whole building industry.
Okay. So I think I have a correct understanding of who you're here representing. When I was reading your letter before us here, it was saying that, well, you agreed with, you agreed with what's in front of us today. You were saying that one of your fears is that it would increase the, the cost of housing in Cochrane and anywhere this is implemented, because obviously, any costs that we introduce through an offsite levy would flow through to the future buyers. Obviously, that's how the process works. I understand that. Is that correct?
That's fair.
Yeah, okay. And so when I brought up to administration earlier about how we're all talking about growth paying for growth, and I think there's a lot of agreement around the table on that, there's all these other areas that the MGA doesn't currently allow us to essentially include in here. But we sit here at this desk, and we know that every person that moves to Cochrane implements those costs on us. I was just wondering, is there, is there any industry opinion on what's currently allowed to be charged in the MGA and what's not, and what the future might hold there? I know it's a jump ball question, but I've never had a chance to ask you guys.
Yep. Thank you for the question, Counsel Wilson. Through the chair, I think part of the confusion is, these are offsite levies, so it's all infrastructure costs off-site of a development. The developer is still responsible for all costs within the development boundary. So that's roads, pathways, parks, street lighting, all the infrastructure to actually connect the community to the larger infrastructure of sewer trunks and whatnot. So there is certain limits put on through the MGA, but overall, it's not the whole picture of development.
You look like you might be looking for more in the answer.
Well, just simply, if I understand that, it's, you're agreeing with, with me then, just out of curiosity, out of interest, that currently the scope is a bit limited and doesn't allow us to charge?
No, not at all.
Is that what I just heard? Okay, so I didn't understand.
No, as Kimber shared, the onsite portion of development pays for all of No, as Kimber shared, the onsite portion of development pays for all of the infrastructure required onsite. And there's allocations within the Municipal Government Act for things like parks and the like that takes pretty much into consideration building a complete community. Offsite levy portion of it is to connect the infrastructure that's on the onsite portion of it to the other parts of it, water treatment plants, the main roads and the like. And I, I think it's fair to say that the land development industry thinks that offsite levy regime as it is is robust and comprehensively compensates its share of growth to a municipality.
Okay. So I just wanted to get to the bottom of that, so we disagree on that, on that point, okay. I had one other question then, just because I just have the moment in front of me here, and I appreciate you guys being here, I do. When we're life cycling our assets, a developer turns over to a town, say it's thirty years later. Obviously, your answer there would be that the town gets paid for those as well through all the taxes over the thirty years that we collect from those residents, would that be your position? Or do you, do you think we're adequately collecting for the life cycling of assets as well?
Well, I can't, I think it's to the town to decide whether it's property taxes, utility rates and the like, adequately provide for the provision of renewing infrastructure when it's required to renew. But I think, remember very carefully that on day one, as Kimber outlined, developer has installed entirely at its cost all of the onsite infrastructure.
That's right.
And then through the offsite levy program, pays for one hundred percent of its share of the capacity required to connect that and provide the services needed, and it turns it over to the town free of charge, essentially. And then the town applies rate against that, which should be taken into consideration in terms of the ongoing maintenance and ultimately the lifecycle repair and renewal of that infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. We, we have fundamentally oppositional views, I completely disagree, but I really appreciate you guys being here and answering tough questions that I've always wanted to ask the development industry, or at least the people representing them. So, thank, thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, thank you. I just, sorry, I wanted to clarify a point, and then I had a question is, so while you're representing Build Calgary, Build Alberta is province-wide, and just quickly by your website, thirteen hundred home builders in various supporting businesses. So I just wanted to clarify that. My question, it was just kind of, it identified that, you know, the development, you're responsible for everything that happens within that development. And one of the, you know, concerns and questions, I think desires really, is that whether the amenities that come with the development can, and if there's a way to leverage this as a tool, to get those amenities built, you know, first or earlier in the development, instead of having those being delivered later in the development. Is there a way to leverage this as a tool, or is there a better tool or conversation?
So, so can we take maybe your comment and your question in two parts there? You referenced Build Alberta. And just for clarity, so the build organizations are a three-tiered organization. So when a member joins Build Calgary, they automatically become a member of Build Alberta, and they automatically become a member of the Canadian Home Builders Association? So it's a three-tiered organization that kind of functions as one with different focal points along the way. In terms of the amenities piece, I mean, that's a, that's kind of a complex question to answer because there's staging aspects that occur in terms of the amenities and, and the build-out. So is there a absolutely tried and true formula that you could apply to a given subdivision? That, that's a pretty tricky question to answer. I know that's probably a less than satisfying answer for you this evening, but it's, it's kind of the reality that, that developers exist with. And certainly, if you think about it, in the development process, there's a lot of, lot of process that's been laid out to just commence the development through engaging with administration, getting the approvals and the like. And so it's really important, as you start that off, that you can actually land houses on the ground because there's a series of financing that's taking place, and it's important to start being able to pay back that financing and part of that process. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it, like, just like my colleague, just a great chance to be able to ask, you know, the industry as a whole, some of those questions. So I do appreciate it and the clarity. And then I just, sorry, a question about your letter. So I feel in reading your letter, and thank you for the kudos to our team identifying that they've been very collaborative and great to work with, that's great to hear. But you'd identified some really great ways that we could improve, you know, rightsizing of infrastructure, deferral of capital upgrades. This one appealed, collectively pursuing grants, these type of things. And so while you said in your presentation that you support adopting the bylaw tonight, because delay will just be costly one way or the other. But it is part of your comfort with delaying the bylaw because you have such a great relationship? And you're, because what I've identified here is, you've really said, we need to keep working on it, and we're comfortable with it, knowing that we're going to be able to keep working on it. So is that where your, your comfort level is coming with? Is that you've got a, a strong relationship with our team and, you know, they're going to continue to collaborate?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. Yeah, that's exactly where we're at. We have a good working relationship. I believe, you know, no offsite levy bylaw is ever done. We're at a good place, there is work that we need to do. But we feel we're largely supportive of where we're at today. And knowing we have the commitment from both ourselves and from administration for the work that we see needs to occur and be done, we're confident in that.
Yeah, and so, and then the work that you've, you feel that needs to be done still, are you hoping that that could be accomplished in the next six months, or is that a year out? What's kind of your timing and, I guess you're hopeful timing, because it always takes two to tango, right?
Yeah. I, it's hard to really specify timing because it really depends on the technical reviews, some of the engagement, the information, reviewing calculations. All of that information is stuff that we're interested in working through with administration in order to make sure that we're making the right decisions and updating as we should be. I think in terms of timing, what my experience is, an annual review is overly ambitious. By the time you finish one, you have to start all over again, and there's no time to learn and adapt. Minimum is like two to three years kind of timing for regular updates in order to not have as large of jumps as what we're seeing now.
Okay. Yeah, and that's been a conversation of our council is, I think we all agree that we need more regular reviews. And, you know, is one year feasible, even though it allows perhaps to have the most accurate information? Yes, thank you very much for your response to my questions, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like that's it for questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll next move to Dan Koonen.
It's amazing what you can pack into just a few sheets here. Basically, most of my comments are really wrapped up more in questions here. So what I'd like to do is just blast away some with some questions. I'm hoping that administration or someone in, in council can possibly ask this because there's no way you guys are going to be able, able to answer all these. If you can, great, but I, I would be very surprised. So I guess one of the first, I'll just start off with the questions here. So I know that there's been a lot of, a lot of, I guess, accepted, accept, acceptance of the growth versus growth. It's been quoted many times. I personally read a bunch of other articles about civic planning that actually don't support that. And I've, I've had a lot of people reference to me that that isn't in fact. One of the things I'd like to know from perhaps administration, where exactly is that stated in the MGA? As a quote, would be one question. And my understanding that there's been, I guess, one of my concerns here is that, my understanding is that some of the reporting deadlines and, and some of the steps actually have been missed. So a question would be sort of, I think that's been referenced in the past too, is what would be necessarily the, the downside of holding that to the next council, which might change? Although most of the people here are in fact running a game. So that might or might not change. And I guess that would be, there's another question would be, I, I realize there's a large contingencies placed in this for, for the reports that I saw. And one of the core elements of offsite levies is, my reading that I've done, is that there are, it's not just based on the construction phase of things, but it's also mentioned, meant to follow through. And that's what this three payment seems to address as well. It's meant to follow through not just on the building, but also on the, the follow-through to a limited extent because developers only have a little bit of, of, of liability, I guess, at a certain point. So I don't see that represented, I guess. Or if it was represented, I really didn't, wasn't able to tease that out. I'm just wondering, again, was that something I missed, or was that something that was just absent from that report? The, one of the comments I would have too is, I, I really struggled when I was reading, a lot of my reading is to, and maybe this is the fact that what I was reading was public versus what, what you guys have available to you. But I really struggled to get a, a really delineation between some of the numbers with the, the projection of the cost. Now, I realize that when we're talking about a constant rollover from one thing to another, and, and, and Counselor McFadden, I really do appreciate some of your questions in that regard. And, and same with you, Counselor Nagel, for teasing out the fact that, yeah, some of this is rolled over. I'm still left, as, as a public, trying to make sense of, well, what are the debt serving, debt servicing costs? What, what are the income that's coming in, what's not, what, you know? Because at the end of the day, I, I, I would hope that we're getting bank for a buck. And I, I can't, I really found it difficult to tease that out. I know that we had some sewage line issues as, and the sewage line being one of, one of the, the costs that was associated with offsite levies. Now that that kind of figured again, pretty literally blew apart, I was wondering where that, where that investigation sits, where the costs sit with that, how that would have any implication with, or any impact on the current report that I saw with the offsite levies. The, there was a mention of cost recovery targets. I don't, or a mention of cost recovery being a target. I don't know if that was met, I don't know where that would be listed or expanded or compared. I didn't see that. So that'd be another question. How much? Oh, I guess another question I had is, I'm, I'm, there's a lot of consult, there's a lot of talks about consultations, about ongoing work, staff involvement for the, the, the report to date. I don't see any, as a public, I don't see any actual tangible number for that. What are those costs associated with getting us, us this information already? There was, I guess, there was another question I had is, there's, I, I was left with a question of going, well, what is the biggest? There seemed to be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars difference between Eriery and Cochrane. And I believe it was you, Counselor Wilson, that talked about the difference being that Eriery has sewage. I can't help but wondering if, and just my mind went to a question of going, well, we've essentially given, we're, we're paying for sewage to be transformed to, or transform, being sent to Calgary. There's a cost of that. There was a, a report about savings of that. But one, in, in that conversation, I don't remember the offsite levies being affected, essentially being elevated because we would have that function here in Cochrane. And that would just be an interesting, I, I, I think, comparator that I, I would like to, to see here. I guess to, to wrap up here, I'd like to thank everybody here and all the presenters and the report. I actually have learned a lot. I thought I knew a fair bit. I learned a lot. So I definitely appreciate some of the questions that were, that were, were asked here. I thought them, they're very insightful. Again, Counselor Nagel and, and McFadden, I really appreciated your comments, as well as you, Counselor Wilson. I guess that I'm, again, I, I have down here that I'm worried about growth being, growth versus paying for growth. And I guess I'm always concerned when sayings like that are, are thrown out there, when in fact, it's, there's not a unanimous sort of consensus on that statement. And the more that, that statement is said, it, it becomes almost fact, as, you know. And I guess that would be one of my concerns here. I'm not convinced, I've been, I think I've been pretty vocal with this council in the sense of some of the speed, it seems to be, you know, there's been a long delay, and then suddenly it's light speed. I'm going to nerd myself out here, but light speed to get to now, there's, there's a, a, a huge push on critical decisions being made. And again, I would come back to, I, I'm not convinced, or I don't see necessarily the rationale for rushing some of these things, especially with all the concerns that, not only that I've heard, but what you've heard. And I, I want to reassure council that these are just some of the concerns that I, I've also heard from the community as well. So about the comprehensiveness, about this, this document, about the need for more questions, urge people, council, not to rush on a decision that, as Judy Stewart said, priorities might change. So I appreciate going a little bit over here, and that would be it, if anybody has questions.
I'm not seeing any. Okay, fair enough. There's one. Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, Dan, I just want to thank you for, for coming and sharing your questions. And I've made notes here, and, and hopefully we all integrate them into various questions as we move forward. I just wanted to highlight for you that any information that we have is the same information that you have. So council gets our agenda and all the supporting documents Thursday night, and then it goes to the public, I think Friday at noon legislatively. So you have all of the same information accessible to you, as does every member of the public, as we do.
Then I would add an additional comment, I'd be kind of scared about that because I, I was left with a lot of questions here.
Yeah, yeah, fair comment, and yeah, it can make for some, if you read, you know, three hundred and fifty-five pages, it's a lot to read in a weekend.
Absolutely.
But yeah, I just wanted to affirm that all of this information is public.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
All right, that concludes the speakers list. I'm just now going to ask if there's anyone in the gallery that wishes to speak for or against. Going once, twice, and three times. That exhausts the speakers list and those wishing to speak from the public. Is there a, any other report from administration? Maybe some follow-up comments that you heard, or some questions from council from what we heard from the public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a very brief presentation, just, of course, we provided a great deal of information in the initial presentation, both Mr. Nelson and myself. I just want to confirm some of the details related, and then I know council will like to get into some questions.
I think.
If I may, may I just ask, Mr. Heinmann, is this all material that would be presented by administration in the report in the regular meeting? I just don't want to duplicate that conversation.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into the, all the details, just kind of a quick summary.
Thank you.
And then open up for second and third reading. Really, I just wanted to emphasize, I think we're consistent with some of the comments that were shared earlier this evening, where we believe that more frequent updates would be beneficial. There is more work to do. Again, but as I said, in my concluding comments, we have made a substantial process related to this work. But again, additional work is required. We also recognize the need for increased public transparency in this. I do want to share some context around that. Certainly been working with our municipal partners. In the case of Eriery, they had a open house for their bylaw recently. They exactly had zero residents attend that. We've previously discussed it. They had, at the Eriery open house, it was mainly the developers that attended. That's not saying that it is not an important part of this. However, I think that's just something that we want to build into this moving forward, as well as the reporting that is required. The spirit and intent that's outlined in section six forty-eight of the Municipal Government Act is very clear. We need to do some additional work, and we're committed to doing that work. In terms of any other details related to this, I'll just go to our recommendation, that administration's recommendation in accordance with the.
that administration's recommendation in accordance with the staff report is that we give second and third reading to bylaw fifteen twenty twenty-five as amended. But anticipate that council has a series of questions that Mr. Nelson and I will be happy to answer.
So Mr. Nelson and yourself, obviously, are going to be present for the second and third reading?
Yes.
Yeah. Council, any questions for the public hearing portion, or can you hold them to debate and second and third reading? Hold? Okay. All right, so without any further ado, I'm going to close the public hearing for the offsite levy, and we'll take a five or ten minute break to allow, so we'll come back at, what is that? Eight, seven fifty? I almost added. Never mind. Hearing closed, and we'll come back at eight fif, seven-